Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the San Mateo Foster City School District Board Study Session. Tonight is May ninth, two thousand twenty-four, and I'm calling the meeting to order at five thirty-two P. M. We will begin with the flag salute, so please stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm at Bowditch Middle School, so it's hard to do the pledge remote. But we will go on to the roll call. So trustee Kim.
Here.
Trustee Trin.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
Here.
I am here, and trustee Watkins is absent tonight.
I'm here.
Oh, you're here. Oh, sorry. Trustee Watkins, you're here. Thank you. I didn't see you online. Okay, we will move on to item four, approval of the agenda.
I'll make motion to approve the agenda second.
Great. Thank you, trustee Brooks, for the motion. And was that trustee Trin for the second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all in favor. Well, actually, we'll do roll call vote. Trustee Kim.
Hi.
Trustee Trin.
Yes.
Trustee Brooks.
Yes.
Trustee Watkins.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that's five yeses. We will go on to item five. This is public statements related to the agenda items. Please limit statements to three i- three minutes. Do we have any public comment from the room there in the boardroom?
No, President, I mean, President.
Okay, great. Do we have any public comment on Zoom?
No public comments on Zoom.
Okay, great. Then we will we'll check back with public comment throughout the study session. We can go on to item six A, Community Schools Initiative.
You all hear me? Yeah, perfect. Good evening, President Proctor and Trust Board of Trustees, Superintendent Diego Ochoa and the public. My name is Dr. Cristiano Baccala, and I'm the Director of School Leadership, as well as the kind of Community Schools Initiative Lead. And I'm super thrilled to be here this evening to share an update and some information on our Community Schools Initiative. You know, I'm very excited. I've got some of my team members here, and we're just really excited to to share what what information we have laid out here for you as an update. A little bit about the agenda here. Four major components. I'm going to quickly go over the context that really serves as a foundation for a strategic plan that we utilize to build upon it, right, with the Community School pillars. Then I'll briefly review the planning years one and two of the Community School Initiative in our district. Give some information on our implementation plans that show how we are moving forward with the Community School model. And then actually give you just some things to to expect as we move forward into the implementation phase. So I'll start off with setting the context. The strategic plan was really laid out beautifully by the work of equity leaders. So I want to begin by thanking our board presidents and 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 the board trustees, both current and 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 previous members who were here in two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty, when we really laid out our equity task force and sanctuary task force. This provided the foundation upon which, when our new Superintendent Diego Ochoa arrived, we were able to really go deep into our equity work and and provide this multi-stakeholder strategic plan, which really was the launching pad for for entering this planning phase year one and currently wrapping up year two of the Community School planning planning phase. I did also want to remind you that I have had the great honor of providing you all updates throughout the planning phase. In August eighteenth, you can see here November seventeen, two thousand twenty-two, and most recently in December. This would be kind of the forward, and I would say like more most comprehensive, since I do have some really important information to convey to you all. Our strategic plan again lays out our key strategies on achievement, equity, and wellness. And I just kind of overemphasized how crucial it was to have this very aligned strategic plan that allowed us to have immediate buy-in for such a powerful initiative, such as the Community School Initiative. Because as I will show you in the next slide here, the alignment is so beautiful. The alignment is incredibly remarkable, as you can see here, the Community Schools model that we followed with guidance from the California Department of Education has these four main pillars of integrated students, cohorts, expanded and enriched learning time and opportunities. And these two pillars really have all of these strategic plan goals that are collectively working in concert as the foundation, right, on their wellness, achievement, and equity. And then we have the next two pillars, right, collaborative leadership and active family and community engagement, which, again, as you can see here, I kind of lined up the the building blocks from from our strategic plan. So just the semblance here and the alignment, I just don't want it to be missed on on the public and and those here in the room. This is it's this is what made the magic happen so seamlessly and so beautifully. So I want to thank everyone who who made our strategic plan laid out like this. A quick recap, our five participating community schools. We've launched the the planning phase year one in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. And we're now kind of wrapping up the second year, completed the second year. And these are the five participating schools, Fiesta Gardens, Bor Elementary, Lead Elementary, San Mateo Park Elementary, and Sunny Bray Elementary. This was, just to give an update on the kind of this app, right, because we did have February ninth deadline for submitting our Community School Implementation Plan grant application. To date, right, we've been able to meet all of our markers, meet all of our milestones that were set forth by the California Department of Education, starting with completing planning year one, providing an annual performance review, an annual budget review for planning year one, which a few weeks back, we were notified that we we passed, right, if you will, we it was approved. And, you know, currently, we're wrapping up the second year of the planning phase. We also, right, we we dove into the implementation grant was, which was available, the application was available November fourteenth. Worked really collaboratively with our stakeholders and communities and really kind of dove deep into the application process. And although it says February ninth there as a due date, I ensured that we submitted the application successfully over a week ahead of schedule, because we did not want to put anything at risk technologically, you know, technological glitches, so on and so forth. And we successfully submitted the application. Here, you know, as you can see, I'm currently working on the year two performance review of the planning that is due at the end of June, which I am currently working with our department team at the business office and then, you know, just internally with all of the information I have gathered to successfully submit that. All this to say is that we have some incredible, right, amazing news. This is kind of like the the table of anticipating grant funding levels that we want to, that we, you you can actually find this in the Request for Applications app. So you can kind of see the total grant amount over five years that we applied for for each of our five schools. The amount of money, the actual amount of money, depends, as you can see on the table here, by the size of enrollment, the enrollment, right, of students in each school. So schools, really, of the five schools, it's only Laurel that is under this medium roaming category. So they would receive, you know, these kind of level of fundings, and you can kind of see how it's laid out from year one through year four of the annual funding that they would receive. Year five, the C D E kind of tapers off, gives you a little bit less with the hope that you're just integrating it into your existing budgets. And then you have like the the total amount. I also want to state, and it's not evident here on the site, but are part of the application process and it really pushed districts and as a criterion to have a thirty-three percent match. So although you see these funding levels here, you know, kind of our commitment to this did involve some matching funds. So and that's in the amount of thirty-two percent, which is available to the public. You can see the RFA, the request for application, so forth. As you know, I'm happy and extremely thrilled to pronounce that four of our five schools, our participating schools that engaged in the planning phase, received the were recommended by a pool by the State California of Education to receive this grant community. So it's I'm extremely proud to announce to the community. I know there's some communication that went out yesterday announcing the grant, right? I mean, if you if you kind of total this with the planning grant today, it's like over five million dollars that we have received and will receive, right, through the Community Schools grant that was run by the California Department of Education. And so I just want to just kind of let that sit for for a while. And I know trustee Latice, you mentioned like, why are you all, why are you wearing green? Well, I just wanted, I just want to share, green has two kind of levels of symbolism. One is, it's, to me, the color of hope and the color of what's to come and what we're going to grow with our communities and all the amazing things that will come from this, these seeds that we planted in all of our hard work. But also playfully, we got the money, baby, right? So here says pending approval, but it was officially, and I want to make this super clear to our community and to board of trustees. It was approved yesterday by a seven to seven vote by the California State Department of Education. They received, you know, a list of those that passed the application process and and met their thresholds of data that they're looking for, and I'll go a little bit into that just momentarily. And we, you know, we 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 made it like we're at, we're in the phase of waiting for that actual award letter and kind of, you know, where we accept the award and then submit that, and then we start receiving the funding this year. I also want to state that although Fiesta Gardens did not, you know, was not recommended to receive the funding, we're still moving forward with providing the Community School Model at Fiesta Gardens International School in the next year. So they are part of our Community School Model cohort internally here, but they were not a part of the the list of approval by the California State Department of Education. And I'll explain a little bit more about what that means. So I laid out in this next slide kind of the evaluation, a graphic of the evaluation criteria that the California Department of Education laid out for us as how they were scoring applications. Fifty percent of the applications was decided by the C D E that would go to applicants whose schools achieved seventy percent or higher on duplicated pupil percentage. And I laid out what what we mean by unduplicated pupils is our students who are either English learners, means, you know, income eligibility to receive free or reduced-priced meals, or they're the foster. So for those schools who read, you know, who met that seventy percent or more, they automatically got that fifty percent, right, scoring on on the application. And I assembled this implementation grant cohort three packets for the public, as well as for our trustees and 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 members here. Because you can kind of see in, and they use the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three data, enrollment data that you see outlined right here on the third page. Just as you open the first sheet here, so that you can see, right, if you look at Laurel, seventy percent, Lead, seventy-four point six, San Mateo Park, eighty percent, Sunny Bray, seventy-seven point two percent. And you'll notice here that Fiesta Gardens in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, their U P C on duplicated pupil count was at fifty-seven point eight percent. So that that piece was determined again by the California Department of Education, kind of out of our control in that sense. But I also want to speak to the other half of this pie chart, which is super critical to understand, because there's some things that that, you know, that the Department of Education of scorers were looking for in each of our components. So in, I know I just, I brought you the implementation plans and the abstract that we assembled and then that I submitted for the application. But I think it's important to understand, like, every artifact that they that they reviewed, and I submitted over six hundred, probably seven hundred pages worth of artifacts of the work that captured these four components that you see here. We would not have met our fifty percent scoring. We did not provide evidence of multi-stakeholder input across two years, both in our shared leadership structures and in our pillar under active and community engagement. We would not have met this fifty percent, right, if we hadn't provided compelling evidence that we were implementing trauma-informed mental health support for students. We also needed to show compelling evidence that we were working toward and increasing the level of racial racially just school climates across our five schools. And finally, they were also looking, and this is the language of the rubrics, right, and I just kind of wanted you all to see that, because we wouldn't also have not have, you know, met this fifty percent, we hadn't shown evidence of collaborative leadership across two years. And so that's really important to to understand. But if you all turn to the first page, if I can just read this very first opener, here's this opener, when we assembled this, I mean, it took countless hours, weeks, months to really work at this. But I'm going to read this out loud, because I want the essence of what I'm about to read to sit with us, because this is, this was like the last thing I worked on, because I kept looking at, how am I going to open this up? You know, I want it to be very powerful. It's really, it's under introduction and background in the abstract. The very first page, so right behind the very first sheet, is the first pair, the first paragraph of the abstract, and it reads like this. In the boring words of a Latinx parent at one of our community school town halls, "Ya era tiempo." It was about time. Our San Mateo Foster City School District Community Schools Initiative is a direct response to decades of marginalization and oppression of our Latinx and BIPOC communities, Black and Indigenous people of color at the following elementary schools. Fiesta Gardens International School, Laurel Elementary School, Lead Elementary School, San Mateo Park Elementary School, and Sunny Bray Elementary School. At an organizational level, our San Mateo Foster City School District Community Schools Initiative emerges from a robust foundation established through our equity-based strategic plan. Our community at all understands the why. Our students and families who have been left behind for generations deserve this level of support to achieve poetic justice. This initiative is also a direct, is a response to collective efforts, including the dismantling of the scooter prison pipeline, ongoing advocacy by our established sanctuary task force, and the continued support of our equity task force. Aligned with these school district initiatives, we have embarked on the community school journey at these five elementary schools, because, as in the equity words of Dr. Mark Luther King, the time is always right to do what is right. So I wanted, you know, to start off, you know, I I wanted to bring you the language of the level and depth and and inspiration that we that we included and rode into our abstract into our applications. And we succeeded. I mean, as you can see, we met every goal that we had that was under our control and really just, you know, aside from the funding, which is super exciting, right? Who who doesn't want five million dollars, right, to really help and revitalize our school districts? But I think the greater message here is the level of empowerment that we were able to achieve with our stakeholder groups. And, you know, I'll share a little bit more about what what we've done and how we achieved that. So here's review. The second part here is the review of planning years one and two, how we engage multi-stakeholders. You may have seen this before. I have shown this to you before. But it's really what I want you to walk away with is just how systematic we approached this to really offer our support, our compassion, our love, and our active listening skills to our constituents, to our families, students, and staff, because we really wanted them to to come together, and we did not give up on them. There was never a canceled meeting. And in fact, the numbers just grew and grew head every time that we met. So that was a year one multi-stakeholder plan. We are at the cost of wrapping up the multi-stakeholder input plan with May twenty-second as the celebration dates. And I wanted to bring up to to the podium here, Jeanette Ramirez, who was principal and special assignment, who joined the initiative, having come from Fiesta Gardens as the principal there, and she and I, and I want her to kind of share her her experience in this year two, being a part of this process.
You got me all choked up. It's kind of hard to, but good evening. We're trustee Superintendent Ochoa and this is guest. As Dr. Baccala said, I joined the group as principal and special assignment this year. And as an, as a child of an inner-city school in New York, born and raised, I know how important it is to have these meetings and to have community schools for our families. And so to be a part of the team has been like amazing. And really, like, I'm really, like, choked up about what you said, because that's what the mission is, to help our families. And then so this during the second year, as you can see, for all five schools, you mentioned it already, not once was there a skipped meeting or, oh, reschedule. Families really wanted this, schools really wanted it. Our first our first session was looking at the inclusive and empathy circles and really explaining to our families what that meant, that when we said all, it meant all children. Our second theme was around barriers and success metrics, like, how, what are our barriers at our schools? And what what are we going to use to measure to make sure that we are looking at those barriers and making sure that we're eliminating them? And then third meeting, our first, third sessions were, let's look at our surveys and let's look at our goals and and let's read what those surveys say. It was very important to collaborate, families, staff, and really find out, because every school has a different need. And then in our fourth cycle, we started reviewing the implementation plan. What does that look like? Different schools had wanted to implement difference as a community school. And then our last session will be, of course, celebrating with our families. So I just want to say that when we, when I started on our second year, it was very, it was very led by us. You know, there's, there's the campa and there's the agenda and, but by the the second, third session, parents start, we started bringing up the parents. We started having them present with us. We started our families taking over the activity part. And when we would break out into our sessions, families would be leading those sessions, and they would be asking the questions. And so it was very powerful. Suzie was there with us. Ellen, Elena was there with us and a lot of staff and and families. And it just became a cooperative. It was not the two of us up there trying to deliver a message. No, it was, it was very involved and and then together. So so it it's just been very just enriching, powerful, very strategic, because every session was a takeaway from the session before, like, what do you want us to bring back? And so again, as an inner-city child, I know how important that is for families. And being the principal at Fiesta Gardens, community is what it's about. So thank you.
So really, parent empowerment is one of the key pieces of, one of the key features of our initiative and really bringing all of our stakeholders together. So this is kind of a quick recap of the multi-stakeholder input activities that were held. We continued on with district site steering committees that met this current school year to advocate, plan, and make recommendations to increase voice. Staff input, meet via community engagement attendance, surveys, faculty meetings, and one-on-one interviews, and we're working on it. Actually, we'll be showing a video at the end, so you can kind of see some of our voices with staff, student, and families. Student input also, you know, small group discussions, surveys, classroom discussions, and one-on-one interviews, also you will will be featured in in the video that you will see momentarily. And then family and community input via also community engagement attendance, small group discussion, surveys, and one-on-one interviews.
Christian, can you highlight that picture again? I'm so sorry, but this is an example of of what I was talking about. The moms, they were right there behind us, and they they were not shy at the end, which was just so beautiful. They're they're ready to deliver the message. Yes, yeah. So, yeah, perfect. Thank you.
So in this third part, you have copies of the implementation plans that we submitted to the California Department of Education. But but I want to kind of share some of the key features, right? As I shared back in the summer, there were like three kind of major areas that were pillars aligned that families wanted, right, expanded after school with that kind of sport activities and sport offerings. And that is one of the pillars, right, is extended learning of the Community School Model, Community School Resource Center onsite with a Community School Coordinator or Lead who would kind of hold the process and and support our families and tap into the community, which is also one of, it it kind of hits on the pillars here from the model. And also parent workshops, so a lot of parent education that our 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 five school communities really wanted that to empower families and create shared leadership, as my colleague Jeanette Ramirez mentioned. And I added a quote here, these, we, there was this one session that just kind of blew us out of our our socks. We had a parent who who shared a quote. You know, it's not about what the country can do for us, right? You can see he's reminiscent of that Kennedy quote. But what we can do for our country, well, it's the same with our school. Well, what can we do for our school together? And he stood up there and I captured it on my video and on my camera, and, you know, like, wow, this is, this is the work, right? Like, this is exactly what we wanted to ignite. This is exactly the kind of level of empowerment that we wanted to provide our our families with. So here you you you'll see is a a visual of kind of the summary of community school activities that I I kind of laid it out visually, but it's really spelled out in the implementation times thoroughly here in this board packet that I prepared for us. And you'll notice that there is a lot of alignment among the schools, right? When we worked with our input engagement sessions, we really were following the model that the the initiative really was asking us to do, right, through the C D E recommendations, and that's like around extended learning. So you notice, you know, a lot of all the sites wanted this increase in after-school program offerings for our kiddos, academic supports in the after-school and sports, right? They they want to be able to 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 engage in sports. So that's a a straight alignment there. Also, we have integrated student services, right? Some differences there and some similarities there, right? But, you know, I kind of codified it here with the legend back on the side, so you can see like what some of the sites, some of the trends of the sites were there. And you'll notice that, like, the Wellness Center, Mental Health Services, Family Hub, Community School Coordinator was kind of, you know, they had that nice alignment across all the sites. And then the next two pieces showed leadership, right, was literally like model, right, the the collaborative leadership component, and then the active then the active community engagement. Um and then the active um, then the active community engagement uh component um is really just continuing these input sessions. And so uh I I'm gonna call Suzie, one of our our coordinators right now um to talk to us a little bit about this uh integrated student services. Uh so she'll, she was really instrumental. I want to thank Suzie for all of her support uh uh through the, through the process because she was really incredible. Um not only with her ability to approach the work with such an immense amount of compassion, um um but also, you know, using just the wealth uh of information and resources that that she operates with on a daily basis. And and she was just always willing to share. So it's this beautiful thing, we're off over just in the planning phase, it felt like we're implementing it anyway. Uh uh because we had members like Suzie who was like, no, we're not waiting for implementation, here you go. Like, here's the resources. And so I'll, I'll let her speak because she'll say it much better than I am. But uh I wanted her to highlight the integrated student services.
Good evening, uh President Proctor, trustees here in the room, all the guests and our former board members supporting us and all the staff that's here, we really are grateful. This was such an exciting opportunity for our families and for our children. You know, it's important that we understand that the integrated component of a key school, key part component for a community school is all the pieces fitting together, the integrated services and what we need. And those breakout sessions, as my colleague explained, were powerful for families to learn that wait, I just came because I wanted to find out how my child can get the dentist, how can my child have different needs that they want? Well, I overstepped a little bit and I would just take my, uh I want my business card printed in English and Spanish. So that's, that's my goal now, but just to get them what they need, highlighting those sections of the day that they feel that we can improve, we can do better for our students with mental health, it's May, mental health month. So that part of it and you know, what can we do as a hub onsite? We as the largest city in the county, we need to make sure that our schools are supporting our families in the best way that we can. Whether it's vision care, dental care, clothes, food pantries, all these things that they were just so grateful for. Of course, as um Dr. Rubik explained, they love the idea of um as well they should of extended learning and you know, sport programs and having, they wanted their own league and they were excited about that at the beginning. And then they started thinking of all these other things that we can do to support. And really, that community engagement was very powerful and very important. And parents still reach out. I said, even if I can't always understand, I will find someone, one of my colleagues will help us. And no one was left behind. We really took pride that we were able to work with them and understand. And if they needed school uniforms or clothing, we went to the Operation School Bell, we helped them transport there and all those things. So it's just an exciting time and I think the work that we started will just move forward. Parents and families are so proud and excited.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
And with that parent excitement, um I want to credit uh the incredible work of our uh community service specialists, our CSSs who really were a foundational piece to activate parent and ancient parent empowerment and work with our staff at the site levels. And lot forces with them to really bring in these input sessions that were rich and meaningful. Um so I want to briefly um uh have uh Ellen Gutierrez, one of our CSSs, come up and share her experience.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Ochoa and the community. Um thank you for this opportunity to share. Um I'm, my name is Ellen Gutierrez, I'm a community service specialist at the District Office. And I just want to share really quick a little bit about how uh our team of CSSs has impacted our families. I think we often find ourselves caught up in like the millions of things we have to do to support our students and our families. Um so it's easy to overlook the importance of slowing down and uh having meaningful conversations with our families. Um because building genuine relationships takes time and effort, um but that's what our team of CSSs did. Um they, we were able to start building genuine relationships with our families by slowing down and listening. Um and what, we began by calling families and inviting them to the events, but they quickly uh evolved into um like we opened an avenue of communication for our families that they could use as a means of um connecting to resources. And and as they found a partner and uh we reminded them that we are there to support them. Um and then getting to meet families um and interact with them during the events was amazing. We had the opportunity to uh further strengthen the relationships we were building. Um and then it was inspiring and insightful to uh hear from our families during the small group discussions. Those were amazing. Um they would tell us stories about like obstacles they've overcome, their personal experiences. But I think it was easy, uh it was, it was good. We needed to hear directly from them because we uh, it helps us to understand where they're coming from. Um not just reading something, but like seeing their, their body language and um just seeing how they felt. Um I just wanted to share a quick funny story. Um during one of the input meetings, one of the dads approached me and um he said, you, why didn't you call to invite me to the meeting? I was like, and I was confused because I was like, no, I called every family, I invited all of them. Um and he said, no, you called my wife, you didn't call me. Okay, uh at first I thought, wow, they, they really care about our calls. But then um I also took it as constructive criticism and I just, I have, I have to find a way to connect with all families. I know I can't call each and every family, but um maybe I can record myself, maybe I can, I have to find other ways, you know, think outside the box. Yeah, that's what I wanted to share and thank you so much for your time and we look forward to continuing this work.
Uh so in this final uh piece of this presentation of the sport update is uh the implementation phase, you know, giving us uh what to expect as as we move forward now that we have secured the funding. Uh we are what the California Department of Education can uh considers us as core three uh of the implementation uh grantees. Uh so here I laid out kind of the timeline of like what this empowerment process looks like uh for the life of the grant and really working to integrate and shift um how we operate in these five schools so that it is um just a long-term uh community school model that we're following. Uh since this first phase, uh we're wrapping up two years of the planning grant phase. Uh this upcoming twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year, we will enter into a five-year process uh that we refer to as the implementation grant base where we will uh be receiving the funding uh as the table that I shared earlier uh mentioned. Uh you know, one through years, one through four, uh you know, you get a certain amount per year and then uh final year, you get a certain amount. The really great thing about having been an awardee now is that this opens us up uh to other grants. So now they're offering extension grants um in year six and seven. Um uh and I, I kind of noted that on the green face there that you can see in this, in this, in this graphic. Um and that's great, right? Like they're, they're, the months are lower, um but um it's still like a commitment from the C D E and an encouraging encouragement. Um as a way to transform our school climates and continue this empowering process for all of our stakeholders, students, staff and families. Um and obviously in this yellow, it's kind of like that, that dream goal of just, it's embedded in our budget so that we don't need to lean on on any grants, right, community school grants, so that it's just how we operate here in San Mateo, Pocahontas City School District with our uh with our five schools. Um also, we, you know, there, we also have some plans, right? Like we're, we're stoked, like we, we've got these winning applications. I've cracked code on this, like I know what that beautiful mix and you know how, what we need to submit uh to be successful. And so uh we're also kind of, you know, considering, you know, potentially adding other schools and looking, doing a data dive, as you know, our superintendent is extremely data-driven. And so we're gonna dive into to those uh, to some data in our schools to see, you know, which ones make more sense to move forward. We certainly will be um a recent meeting for Fiesta Gardens in hopes that um that we, we get the granting for the grant opportunity for them. Um but this is kind of like the proposed timeline um and what to expect. Um and more granular, at the granular level, like we will continue our district and site-based steering committees uh to continue to provide input and direction. A couple of weeks ago, I provided a direction to our school site leaders uh to uh begin to uh meet with their steering committees and plan for next year. Um uh I I provided some, you know, uh uh agendas for them so that they can have meaningful conversations and planning for for the next year. Um also reaching out to our district uh uh steering committee members uh so that we can start getting some input on and building that agenda. We certainly want a meeting or two before the end of this year to really kind of get us back into the groove of things and 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 that empowering process of of providing input and and direction to all of our five sites. Active and family community engagements will continue uh to collect assets. What's really key here and why we're going to continue this is because we know that these implementation plans are not like set in stone, they're not frozen in time. They, they have shifts, right? Assets, needs, uh priorities might shift. Um I I don't expect and neither does the C D E expect there to be like monumental shifts. It it'll be just more like, okay, do we have more of a dental need? Like, do we need to meet that and include it in our implementation plan? Then that's what we'll do, right? Uh so really looking at ensuring that these plans are just open to, to meeting the need uh of each uh community uh based on this collection of multi-stakeholder input. Uh we'll collab, uh collaborate closely with program partners, right, to expand after school opportunities uh as well as with our community agents, like agencies and partners uh to enrich our existing wraparound services and or add others uh that are not currently a part of it. Um so that piece will, will continue, right, and those things will have such generative value that it'll just uh increase a lot of opportunities for kids. Um three more items here is like training, supporting, collaborating with district-based, like new school coordinator uh who will kind of oversee the five sites, that's like a position that we're, we're looking to, to move forward with. We also train and support collaborate with the site-based community school coordinators uh who will kind of lead our family resource centers or the community school centers. Um and will, you know, provide them that training and support. Uh and overall, continue to collaborate with site leaders to uh really exciting, right? Organize grant openings for our community school centers and family resource centers um as they continue to uh bring to life the implementation uh plans uh as we, as we launch into the next school year. So we have to look out for those, well, obviously. Uh uh I'll do the community and on these grant openings. Um so I am ending here with tons of gratitude um because this, again, could not have done it alone, we could not, you know, we, I started off with gratitude and really championing the equity work and the equity approach that you provided as Board of Trustees uh both current and past, uh because you've really provided this uh uh foundation uh upon which we're able to confidently go out there and know that we're not gonna get, you know, uh kind of like that pushback from, from anyone on why we're doing it, right? It's more about how can we do it better, right? And I, and I, and I credit the strategic plan, I credit our superintendent and just the Board of Trustees for, for that support. And I wanted to add this beautiful image of our lead principal Natalie Delahut, she looks so like and that was one of our community school sessions, right? Like she's there with her constituents, they're thinking of the future, right? For the lead community school and I wanted that to be kind of the opener uh as I go through uh each uh slide, you know, thanking our school principals um for, for taking on uh uh this, this incredible uh initiative at their site uh and always coming and approaching it with such inspiration and such collaboration such as I've never seen before, like this is incredible. And, and so I wanted to uh begin by thanking our, our school leaders for, for that empathic approach that they took uh to ensure that um we, we, we got the job done together and you know, we, we were able to really be compassionate leaders and learners along the process. Um I want to thank our Fiesta Gardens team, uh the names that you see here listed uh is a mixture of of uh steering committee members uh for their community school uh at their site. But it's also, uh we also included like custodians and other members who were a, a part of the Fiesta team that ensured that we were able to provide our engagements and were able to open doors and opportunities for, for our family. So it's a mixture of folks there, but I wanted to give everyone a shout out because it literally took a village to do this at every site. Um I wanted to thank our Laurel team uh for coming together. Again, it's a mixture of uh uh community school steering committee members along with, you know, office staff along with, you know, our custodian staff and folks who stepped up to, to, to take care of childcare needs during our sessions so families can really tune in and powerfully engage. Um so I wanted to uh send a quick shout out to the Laurel team. Uh the lead team, again, um uh really showed up uh and it was just incredible to collaborate uh with, with them as well. Um and again, it's a, it's a mixed uh uh batch of names here, uh of folks who were really directly uh involved in and supporting this initiative. Um our Simon Tail Park team, um uh also a major shout out to them for, for coming together um uh as an incredible team and championing the work and um and always, you know, showing up with uh a large amount of enthusiasm. The Sunny Break team as well, uh you know, we just engaged with this community uh at such high levels and, and you know, I would be remiss if I did not thank all of the folks. And my apologies if I missed anyone in, any of the teams, there was just a lot of folks that, that need, needed to have their names up here. So if I missed anyone, just let me know, I'm happy to update this slide. Uh but really it took, it was a monumental effort on, on part of everyone uh to, to get this work done and, you know, and, and and get the wheels moving for, for, for a successful uh application uh assembly. I also wanted to thank our district steering committee. Um it was a steering committee, uh and I, and I say this uh echoing a lot of our other districts who are involved in this planning process. Um we, you know, this is not like a typical process, we, we're kind of, we're, we're following California Department of Education guidance, but we're also building something new at, at the same time. And so, you know, I just wanted to, to thank them for their support and we had, you know, representatives of our site. Uh by now the team has like doubled in size and so, you know, just a lot of great, amazing uh collaborators who are just here for kids and really want to do what's best for, for our community. Also want to thank our, our district team um in, you know, each of these categories, you know, it really was, as I mentioned, like uh uh a collaboration, right, uh uh among all of our district departments. And so I had the great pleasure of, you know, leaning on our student services department, uh our education services department uh who actually led a lot of the small group inclusion uh groups with our, with our stakeholders at each of the sites. Community service specialists uh such as Ellen and her team. Um uh but also at the site level, we had a lot of folks who were uh just connecting with, with families as well. Our multilingual team for coming out, special, uh we also had our education services department who did a lot of work. Uh uh Pam Bartfield in particular um came out to our sites in that first year to really empower families with that knowledge of how, you know, what it is, how are we approaching instruction? And how are we ensuring that we're meeting our, our benchmarks and things like that to push forward instruction and in achievement? Uh business services departments as well, our community schools team, so many of them who are here, major round of applause for them. Uh and a special shout out to our office, uh the superintendent's office, uh you know, collaborating with this uh you know, with uh Tatiana, uh Diego Perez, Diego Ochoa, like we were kind of like a dream team here. Um and we, we were, were able to just bring all the pieces of the puzzle together uh because this isn't your typical grant process, this is something huge and significant uh to be able to achieve. And as the wrap-up, I wanted to share a quick video so you can hear from our stakeholders and not so much from me. So I'm gonna have Joe pick it up.
This year, we've been going through a lot of processes that include what is our school expansion, our community schools initiative. And both processes have involved a lot of feedback from staff and from the community.
So we have our school site council and then we have our English language advisory council. And we use those two committees in addition to our instructional leadership team to hear voices from the adults.
My family gets to be part of it when we assist the meetings, that's well. Uh so we get to learn more about what's happening to the school, your child's education.
We do have a large um population of families who live in a different part versus the neighborhoods' families. And they want to be included, they want to be a part of their child's day, both before school and after school.
They are so resilient and that is something I really admire. I draw inspiration from the resiliency of these children and families. They come to school with smiles on their faces and they want to be here and they want to learn. They come to school with smiles on their faces and they want to be here and they want to learn.
I really love spending time with our teachers. Our teachers are really great.
We hope that we can have more opportunities for students that are uh culturally relevant and also. Um, give them more opportunities that can expose them to career opportunities and skills that they may need.
Would be like art projects that we don't get regularly do more times. And Lego times would be like most times and and those are my favorite um times and places to be. Cause we get to express our um feelings in art.
I have um watched the development of the community schools and what ideas that we do have and I'm excited. Um, both at the district, people trying to push in services.
Um, we have a lot of families who need to get to work early or work late and they need to have supervision for their students. And because school is a safe place, have extending that before and after school is really important.
And of course, our teachers are a very important part of this process. When teachers let us know that there's a need in the community. We use that information to help coordinate services to make sure the needs of our families and our students are being met.
Then we also sent out community surveys to all the families, people who couldn't perhaps make the evening meetings or couldn't be a part. Of the steering committee so that every family had a chance to say their piece on what they believed in for a community school.
Our community is really tight here and I think it's the parent community that comes in and they meet our teacher community and our staff community. And then it's like a big wraparound. So I think that's the best part about the community schools idea and implementation as well. Is that everybody continues that, let's do what's best for each other.
And that is uh a wrap for uh my presentation, um, for just. I'm open for clarifying questions to the other comments.
I'll I'll go first since I um am a parent at one of these schools and I just want to say I've, you know, watched this. Process um in motion both before I joined the board and then also afterwards and. I know that Dr. Rubal Kaba has done and his team have done just an incredible amount of work. So I just really want to thank um everyone who worked on this initiative. Um, you know, it's a lot of wrangling, a lot of um, just a lot of time spent listening to parent concerns. Um, and being part of the process as a parent, I was really. You know, just gratified to see so many faces on campus that I normally never see. Um, you know, these are parents who may work outside of the area or. They have difficulty just kind of showing up in a more traditional way that we usually think of parents showing up on campus and. Um, so, you know, just seeing the support that uh was provided in terms of childcare, like having dinner ready, like having it at a time where. Um, as many families as possible could attend, I think was really important and um. You know, it's also a learning um process for me, right? Because, you know, I have, I um inhabit a certain space and, you know, some families. Have different challenges and it was also very eye opening. Um, to see like, well, what are the challenges that that other families might face that I might not have been aware of and to kind of come together and. And talk about like, if, you know, these are the barriers that face various families at like the local level. State, federal level, you know, some families are um. You know, they they were faced with persecution in their home country, that sort of thing. And it's just, you know, it's just really. Um, it was really, I think, important that they were able to share those. Uh, those challenges and to kind of like build community with the other. So. Um, I just wanted to say thank you so much and I'm really excited about, you know, the positive changes that are coming.
Hello. First of all, I want to like, I would like to say, yes, 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 yeah. Yes, and yeah. Finally. Finally, this is amazing. Thank you. To you and your team for putting all this amazing work into making this happen. This is long overdue, long overdue. Um. I hope I get you, you don't know. You know, it's just. Something I've been needing for so. Thanks, Drew.
I think I'll, I go with the other trustee said, um, I'm fairly with the board and I think this is probably one of the things that I'm most excited about. Looking forward to our district, having worked in education policy and education equity for fifteen years of my career. To see us finally making this investment to tackle the issues, not just what's happening in the classroom, but outside of it. I think I've spoken a lot about just, you know, having immigrant parents who felt like they wanted the outside looking in. The stories that I hear the superintendent share, the stories that you shared with me, the stories that all the team have seen firsthand. Bringing parents into this conversation. We've been lucky enough to be a part of some of those conversations and to just see the. The gratitude, almost the confusion, you know, it's almost like so many of us, especially. The communities that we're serving feel almost like passive participants in our citizenship in our schools. And to bring them in this active role where you share that ownership, you share that leadership, we're taking these dramatic steps to really go just beyond. What we talked about to address this educational, actually, because the equity failures that we've had, not just in our district, in our whole country. And to really take this kind of dramatic step to move forward, I think is just really exciting, tremendous amount of respect and uh gratitude to the entire team, to superintendent, to everybody here. Just every success story, every cool room we see of parents and knowing how hard it is for many of us parents to have made that time. To find coverage, to find, to get the childcare that we provided, um, to find time to get out of work sometimes just to be there. I think it's just a really great sign of where things are going. And I know with any type of new initiative like this, there will be growing pains, there will be things that we'll figure out as we go because we're trying something new. But it's just honestly one of the things I'm most excited about, one of the reasons I'm very proud to be a trustee. Um, I do have some clarifying questions, but I don't know, maybe uh President Proctor or Trystee Watkins want to say something first.
Trustee Kim, I think now would be a good time um to open up to the members in the public that might want to ask a clarifying question and or. Make a comment. So let's do that now, um, for our in-person attendees, um, those who want to uh speak on the topic. Um, or ask a clarifying question, let's do that right now and I'll pause for for a minute here. I can see you all in there, but I'm gonna see who might raise their hand. Seeing none, there's one, hands up. All right.
Hi, Diego. Okay, I like it, right? Uh, sunny bright. Um. First, thank you for doing that. Um, but moving forward, I do have some clarifying questions. Um, in regards to how this is gonna roll out and for the steering committees. We're gonna have to have, um, there's gonna be a lot of work moving forward for each of the steering committees, including the one at the district. At the D O. Is there a job description already regarding the community schools coordinators that you're looking? That's my first question. The other thing is. And I've said it before, um, the. The teachers or your staff, without teachers or staff, you don't have a program. And we have to be part of the decision making. It's in the grant. One third of the decision making is us, one third is yours and one third is the parents. I'd like to clarify to make sure we are included in that decision making. Yes, we, it's great that we saw all of that. But you only have one meeting at each site with staff. You had twenty or. I forgot what numbers you had. It was in the double digits with the parents, but one with the with the staff. Moving forward, we would like to have as many meetings as you have with the staff. Sorry, with the parents, with the staff. I think it's important. That your stakeholders are recognized and respected, that we are the stakeholders. We are the ones that are in the frontline, helping you out, helping out these parents. Um, and so I just want to reiterate to make sure two things, one, job description. And those meetings, um. Well, actually I have more, but I will wait because my time is better right now. Yeah, I'll just wait one more, um. It's very confusing that you have four schools that are in. Community schools officially and you have Fiesta Gardens in there and they're only gonna and. Um, Diego, thank you for coming to our side and clarifying this. The money is only allocated for three years. The planning committees, the steering committees at all the other four, um. Schools will be planning for five years. We need clarification on Fiesta Gardens. What can happen after three years? Because we're planning for five. And yes, you put money aside for them. What happens to the other money that the other schools didn't get? Right? Because. We need to know we're planning, we don't want to leave them out. So what happens after three, year three? I think that's important to address now, moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. And uh, Dr. Rubal Kaba, if it's okay, I'll I'll um speak on a couple of the uh questions for clarification. Um, the steering committees will have some decisions to make in the months ahead. Um, as you all know, Dr. Rubal Kaba showed in uh his presentation tonight, the approximate. Budget amounts per site. It's in the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year range. And so the decision on the community schools coordinator role at our at our school sites. It's one that we're, we're gonna partner with those steering committees to help make that decision. Um, and at the same time, I want to distinguish that very separately from a district office coordinator because. In order for us to continue to receive funds every year. We have to have our documents completed. We have to meet timelines. We have to submit information into online portals. Um, it's frankly, it's gonna require a lot of gathering of information. Um, and my likely. Uh, approach to it um will be to assign those duties to one of our pre-existing administrators at the district office. Not to hire a new person. And that's for the district level. And at the same time, our school sites. Have all expressed an interest in having a site-based community schools coordinator. So that's a conversation we need to have at our school sites. Um, so that when we make the decision as to who will coordinate the work at the school. Um, it really fits the needs of each individual school. When you look at, you you, the second question you asked was about, was about funding for Fiesta Gardens. So. We submitted this big grant application for our five schools. And Dr. Rubal Kaba explained the proportion of kids who qualify as unduplicated. And and the quality of the grant application. Our grant application was among the best in the state of California. And for that reason. Our schools were funded in this cohort of of grants. Fiesta Gardens, actually all of our schools, the state of California used. The unduplicated percentage from two years ago, not from this year. So they actually hurt our applications unbeknownst to them. Because we did such a good job this year of identifying all our kids properly in our system. So whereas Dr. Rubal Kaba noted that Fiesta Gardens twenty-two, twenty-three. Free and reduced or unduplicated percentage was fifty-seven percent. For for the current year, it's already sixty-seven and a half percent. It's almost ten percent greater. And it's much, much closer to the threshold that they used this year in cohort three. And each year of the cohort it lowers. So I have every confidence, um. Anybody who wants to wager lunch on this. I have a lot of, I have a lot of spots in San Mateo, I might be willing to wager. Um, because we're gonna have a very strong application and our our numbers are gonna hit where we want. And we're actually gonna identify a couple more schools that we're gonna submit grant applications for and very likely be funded for those schools as well. Um, and we'll be putting that information out over summer. And coordinating with those school sites and holding, holding meetings and and doing that whole process. Having said that, the community schools grant is only part of our reason for doing this work. The money is certainly helpful and I'm extremely grateful that we've had so many awesome people. Participate in this process to help us earn these grant dollars. But these grant dollars will go away. So it's our responsibility to budget effectively and prudently to make sure that we have money set aside. In fact, if they hadn't funded any of our schools, we would have implemented community schools. This year as well. And I went to Sunny Bray and I told the staff that when I met with them. And had I been at other schools, and I was at other schools in in other venues, but um in our ready to launch meetings. I explained that that was the plan moving forward. Um, I still. Believe that we would get funded for most, if not all of our schools and. And so our expectation is that Fiesta Gardens will be part of cohort four in and possibly two to three other schools. Uh, and then again, that kicks all the way forward to twenty thirty-one and twenty thirty-two when. The extended grants go down to about a hundred thousand a year and that will give us a little bit of a way to budget. Sort of a fifty fifty model at that point in time. Um, and then certainly in years twenty twenty, twenty thirty-two and twenty thirty-three. And those of you that are near retirement, yes, you're thinking, I won't be here anymore. I'll be gone. Somebody else will be on the board. But Jean and Latisa and Maggie, you'll be on the board for the next eight years, so we don't have to worry about that at all. Um. And and the way to do that is to keep community schools. Um, at the forefront of our work and I plan to do that as a superintendent. Um, as a school district, we budget for three years, so I can't budget for five years and I won't budget for five years. I'll budget for three years. But every single year I add another year to that process and budgeting for community schools as. Long as I'm the superintendent, I'll continue to um align funding to make sure that our students get. Additional tutoring, get longer summer school programs, have more access to medical and dental and. Uh, mental health services and and the variety of actions that go along uh with our community schools. Um, and then on the last point, I think uh we have a difference of opinion in um. In how this engagement process um uh arrived to where it is. And I want to say. I think we should calibrate, all of us should calibrate on um how to. Um, open access and create opportunities for engagement. Um, for all of our employees, when we think about our our district employees. Um, we're thinking about our t- our wonderful teachers and our staff, our over six hundred. Um, classified staff members as well as our administrators. Um, and then certainly in our communities, all of our parents and. Um, and so our our agreement moving forward is uh when we host a meeting, all will be invited. And all will be encouraged to attend and that includes all of our employee groups. And um, I think you're gonna see a big uptick in in engagement and that's certainly a goal for Dr. Rubal Kaba and for I. Um, as we move this work forward. And so I can acknowledge that in the last two years, less staff engagement took place, but I can certainly. Um, own the fact that our goal moving forward is to increase, has to change that outcome. Um, and and really enrich the conversation, really have, um, just have more. More points of view, more feedback at the table. Yeah. Any other in person? All right. Uh, Joe, if you're online, could you um open up to the online audience uh for comments or questions?
Yes, there is one raised hand. Marcella Miranda.
Let me bring up the timer. Just a moment. Okay, Marcella, please go ahead. Marcella, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Marcella Miranda. And I am the uh director of School Community Partnerships at San Mateo County Office of Education. Esteemed Board of Trustees Superintendent Diego Ochoa. And members of the audience, I am delighted to be here to congratulate you on your tremendous achievement. It is an honor to recognize the dedication of your staff. And the significant contributions of the parent community that have led to this success. This grant is a testament to the district's commitment to innovative educational strategies and strong community partnerships. Which are essential for strong and healthy communities. The active participation and support of the parents, particularly in input meetings, have been crucial in making such strides possible. Promoting a culture of inclusivity and shared decision-making. As you move forward, I am excited about the opportunities this grant will provide for enhancing. The educational experience of San Mateo students. I extend my heartfelt congratulations to everyone involved in this remarkable achievement. I extend my heartfelt congratulations to everyone involved in this remarkable achievement. Ms. Ramirez, Dr. Wakaba, uh, you can just see when they talk about this work, you can see their faces light up. And that, that is just, um, really heartfelt, and, uh, you can just see the connections that they have with the parents in the community. Um, your efforts are shaping the future of our children, and I'm truly inspired. So congratulations again to all of you, and, um, we are here to support you every step of the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Joe, are there any other raised hands?
No other raised hands.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, so at this time, I'll, I'll put it back to the board. Uh, trustee Kim, I know you had some more questions and comments, and then um, take it around the table.
That's good. Thank you, Superintendent. Um, for either Superintendent Ochoa or Dr. Wakaba, a few other questions on the follow-up. So Fiesta Gardens specifically. My understanding is we had funding set aside in the case that we didn't receive the grant. So is Fiesta Gardens for year one, assuming we don't know what happens to the next cohort, gonna be funded at the same level as it would have been had it received the grant?
Correct.
Okay. And then looking on that one as well, if we had set aside funding for all five schools initially, and now it appears that because we've received this grant, we won't hire that funding. Do we have a plan for that funding? Is it to extend our runway? Will it remain kind of in the community schools bucket? Or will it be redeployed elsewhere as that conversation is so ongoing?
That was the alarm, the, the ding 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 ding. Yeah, so what we do, uh, trustee Kim, is we move it, so we're basically extending that budgeting one year forward. So we've got the five-year runway, but from our perspective, we have that money set aside so that it really does in a way, it's sort of, we're very lucky that it's already built into that. Um, you know, into that funding for that sixth, you could think of it as that sixth year. And we know things will cost more money down the line, so we still have to continue to budget for that. Um, but that's certainly the intent of the money.
Right. And then on that last note, I do appreciate that we are planning ahead. Five years does feel like it gives us a certain amount of runway, but especially in my work with the PTA Council, the most common complaint I hear is that the district adopted something, we ran out of funding, and then parents had to step in to cover the gap, and we know for a lot of community schools, that's not a viable option. And so the fact that we are planning even now about how we're gonna extend that runway, I think it's just a really responsible, sustainable approach to what we're doing. On Fiesta Gardens, again, one thing I was concerned about is with the campus swap. I assume that'll affect the UPC numbers depending when, not when we apply. But if, for example, if we didn't make the next cohort, when we're gonna apply again, do we have any sense of how that might impact our viability or application if if let's say we're not accepting the cohort for, we would have to apply for the next cohort after that, the numbers would change again once we move to North Central Campus.
Yeah, I mean, that's very likely in the situation. Uh, we, um, we predict, right, that the UPC percentage will increase, right, as a result of this move. Uh, to what extent is a little unknown, right? Uh, because, you know, we just, it's our first time kind of doing, uh, this kind of dynamic of moving campuses and um, and, and because it is a dual immersion program, a magnet program that we're gonna remain as such. Um, you know, we're starting with the kinders, right, and bringing them in as little, as young as possible, and we're not gonna like add kids, you know, in third or fourth grade, right? We're gonna do it very thoughtfully and be faithful to the dual immersion program that they have there. So, yeah, to what extent, I mean, we're expecting a rise in the percentage. Uh, but specifically to what extent, it will raise the numbers, it's, uh, we'll, we'll be sure to monitor that closely and report on.
Well, there's, it's also, we're adding grade levels, so.
With all those changes, I mean, if we're in the next cohort, I guess it will matter, but would that affect our viability if we switch campuses? Is that something that we'd have to report or?
Correct, yeah, okay.
Got it.
Yeah, it would, it would be something that, uh, trustee Kim, it would be something that we would definitely include in our cohort application, but um, it would not be a, a scored factor. It wouldn't change the, the likely outcome in terms of how they analyze the, the criteria of the community schools language. Um, the other thing that's, you know, really powerful about the, the intersection of this grant application is the, going back to twenty nineteen and the work that the Pedro, uh, Noguera, uh, consulting from did with our school district. Um, and, and certainly carrying into twenty twenty. Um, and really calling for these exact community schools uh, strategies, and it was specifically to North Central San Mateo. It was, it was situated in North, and in North Central San, San Mateo with North Central San Mateo families, and it was part of our decision-making that led us to this place. And I also want to add two things. Um, we are also pursuing additional grant funds through other means. Um, we're in a partnership right now with our education foundation where we applied for some pretty significant uh, measure, correct, Measure K grant funds, and thank you to the Ed Foundation uh, for the work and for the leadership in helping us get that submitted. Um, and there's certainly, it's competitive. There's no guarantee you ever, uh, get funded through Measure K, but um, those grant funds actually call for, um, increased mental health support services that will dovetail perfectly with this grant. And then, uh, in two weeks, we'll apply for a federal grant um, to fund, uh, mental health services at our priority schools, all of which are these um, these, uh, community schools and Fiesta Gardens. And it specifically brings in three million to the school district solely for the express purpose of, um, mental health services. And when we put these applications together, they're very thorough and they're very strong. Um, we don't always get the money, but it never, ever stops us from applying for the next one if it aligns with what we're doing, and that's what I think is so powerful about the work that has happened is that this is all part of a bigger plan. It's all part of a coordinated plan. Um, and with just a little bit of luck, I think we're gonna be sitting here with multiple grants, uh, funding this work for many years to come.
I'd love to hear the alignment with our long-term strategic plan. And then my last comment, I just wanted to echo what, uh, Mr. Alorga said earlier about the future engagement. Some of the trustees had a chance to meet with some of the teachers directly, and that was a concern that we heard over and over. I did want to ask, you know, my very first board meeting was December, when you actually presented about this issue. And we heard from some media members at the time that they felt that the process hadn't been as inclusive, that they hadn't, they've been invited to the same number of meetings, or that certain things, whether it's surveys or follow-ups that hadn't happened. I know we've acknowledged that not everything has been perfect in the planning period, but I did want to ask, I guess, since that December meeting till now and the back half of the year to, uh, planning, were there any changes in terms of the way that we approached these conversations, or anything the district has done to address some of those concerns?
Yeah, following that, uh, board meeting and the feedback that we received, uh, I visited all five school sites and helped input sessions with the staff at, uh, you know, it's staff meetings. Uh, some of them were not on their traditional staff meeting day, but, you know, we try to accommodate as many as possible. Uh, given that we had, you know, an upcoming grant application submission date, right? Um, moving forward, we are going to, uh, embed that as part of the input gathering process as we build the plans for the implementation phase. Uh, we're gonna work closely with our steering committees, uh, to be able to help schedule these, right, routinely throughout the school year. Uh, so that staff are able to provide more thorough feedback, uh, throughout the implementation phase, not only in the first year, and next year coming up, but just systematically throughout, uh, the community school, uh, process.
Dr. Wakaba, what's the composition of a typical steering committee for a school site? How many, how many overall, is it about ten folks, fifteen?
About ten folks, yeah.
So that's, that's also key, Dr. Wakaba, because part of what the evening sessions, and actually, many teachers attended evening sessions. I was there, Dr. Wakaba was there, so that did happen. But it's very different to hold a meeting during a faculty meeting because you have everyone there. So you'll have, if you have thirty staff members, you'll have thirty staff members there. When you hold it in the evening, for a variety of reasons, having to do with childcare, obligations out of work, the need to just be away from work. Um, you won't get everybody from a staff meeting there, but you also won't get every parent there. So even though we're very proud of having eighty parents at a meeting for lead, there's four hundred and forty families that lead, so there's pro-rata, close to eight hundred parents. So not every parent there is, is there either. Our task is to work through these steering committees to really get that cohesive group of, a mixture of parents, staff, and the district. And then offer for our community schools, our staff to visit with those staff at the time, if this is an interest, to do so if they would choose at one of their faculty meetings, and we can do that. And, and now that the, the input gathering is complete, the sense of putting this grant application together and getting it off the ground, now we're in, in implementation and iteration mode, so it's about having open lines of communication to get feedback. Um, and I think we're in a really good position to do that, if we continue to bring that cohesive group together at a time that works for those who volunteer to be on those steering committees, but also offer to meet with, uh, staff at a time that's more, um, that's likely to have better attendance, you could say.
And I've asked a lot of questions, but just wondering, how amazingly excited and grateful I am just for this whole initiative, for everything your team has done, just seeing the level of engagement. And in superintendent knowledge that there are certain folks who still haven't a chance to talk to yet, just logistically, and just challenges trying to reach out to every family, but the number of families that we've been able to bring to the table is just absolutely amazing to me, just having grown up in communities like that to know how difficult of a lift that is, I think we've just done a tremendous effort. So huge credit to you and your team, and I just look forward to seeing how this continues to develop and really achieve everything that we've set out to do here. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I have, um, question, this can be for you, Dr. Wakaba, or Superintendent Ochoa. Uh, currently, as we are in the implementation phases, um, are there any barriers right now that we can see are kind of lingering that we can uh, that are priorities, that we need to tie up some of those ends to move forward?
Honestly, I don't, I don't see any barriers. I think everyone is excited. Um, I know, you know, every school community that has, that is a part of this initiative. Um, they're ready for it, right? Um, uh, and, you know, all five schools are just willing, like, I, I don't have that kind of pressure of like, no, we don't want this, or, you know, no, this is too much work for us. That has never been the feedback. Um, and again, like that buy-in, that internal deep-seated buy-in is there, and that's usually and, and I'll tell you, I was part of a professional learning community over these last, still am over these last two years with, uh, colleagues across the Bay Area and across California who were leading the planning phase, uh, in their districts and their schools. Some of them were charters. Others were like medium, smaller, larger school districts, but all were tasked with that same initiative that I was tasked with. And I cannot tell you how many times, uh, we were discussing something that I didn't feel in my context here, and that was like, we don't want community schools right now in their contexts, right? So I, you know, all this to say is like, I, we're really, I'm very fortunate. We're really fortunate that that's not the pushback that we're getting, those barriers. Um, I think, given that it's a new initiative, uh, for our district, um, things will fall into place, and as Superintendent Diego Ochoa mentioned, it's like we're, we're, we're like building this, this, this kind of ship, this, this, this kind of system and process for for ensuring that the right resources get funneled into each site, uh, with a shared leadership component. Um, and you know, a lot of what the C D E has shared with, uh, this P L C, this Professional Learning Community of Community School Initiative Leads, is that this kind of friction, these conversations are completely normal. Like, if you're not, you know, having conversations where there's like some level of friction, you're likely not doing it correctly, right? Because you know, at the, at the end of the day, community school initiative or community school is often, it's not only the right work, but it's the tough work, right? Because you are trying to engage multiple voices. Uh, you're trying to bring in historically disenfranchised voices. Uh, and, you know, when you're, uh, approaching it through an equity lens and racial justice lens, you know, it, it's, it creates a lot of friction, right? And that's normal, right? Because we all want the same thing, and, and I'm just so, uh, thrilled and uh, proud of our district, and particularly these five school communities, because they are all in for the kids and for the families, and I'm talking on behalf of all the staff. That's why, you know, I had a slide, uh, uh, for each site. Uh, because they're all there for the right reasons, and we're looking for the right, for the exact same thing for these kids, and that's you know, to ensure that they have the wraparound services and that, that extended rich opportunities, uh, after school, so. So no, I'm, I'm not really confronting any, any, any kind of barriers. I mean, all the barriers I normally are confronted with. I, we're not, we're not operating. We, we don't, we don't have that. That's what makes this like so magical, and that's why that's why we're wearing a green, like, I mean. We're going straight ahead, full steam ahead, um, and we'll keep taking this feedback and keep, no, it's like it's like building, uh, a creation with clay, right? You know, as soon as someone gives, a group gives you some feedback, then you just mold it into that component. But we all, at the end of the day, have the same goal, which is student wellness and success.
Any other board clarifying question? Any more questions from the online audience? Joe?
Checking. Uh, there are no raised hands at this time.
Well, in that case, I think we are ready to adjourn.
Is trusted. Proctor?
She's not on.
She's not. She's, uh, she's actually doing double duty tonight at a, um, at a Bowditch Middle School event, so she's jumping in and jumping out and uh, doing the best she can, but she, as you know, as a board member, you've got a lot of, a lot of these invitations, and she couldn't miss this one. Um, but, uh, but she's been in and out, so uh, it'll be on the three of you all to make the motion and, and see who wants to second it and take it from there.
Anyone, anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn? Thank you, trustee. I'll say.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, then I'll say it. And what's that? It's six fifty-eight, and I'm making a statement.
Thank you.